There you go. Duty, duty, duty. Come down to Tubal now. He'll be over here to sing his song. There we go, boy. That's downtown, ain't it? Better, better, better.
I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to meet into order for June 1st, 2015. First thing before we begin tonight, we'll have a prayer and a pledge allegiance. Ms. Moxley.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, thank you for giving us another day. We ask your blessing upon all who are gathered here this evening. In these days after Memorial Day, may we all be mindful of the sacrifices made by so many who gave their lives in service to our nation. May they rest in peace. Bless all the men and women who serve our nation this day in our armed forces. Dear Lord, please guide the commissioners as they exercise their calls to leadership and continue to equip them for these challenging times. Bestow upon them the wisdom, discernment, and knowledge they need tonight and in the days ahead as they weigh the priorities for Onslow County in the new fiscal year. Almighty Father, remind us all of the dignity of work and teach us to use our talents and abilities in ways that are honorable and just and of benefit to the citizens of Onslow County whom we serve. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here this evening, hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. If you have not turned off your cell phones, please do so now or silence them. Also, I'd like to recognize Sheriff Miller and his entourage is with us tonight. Thank you for coming. As we move forward with tonight's meeting, the board gives the audience two opportunities to speak, as long as you sign up in the back of the room for either the three-minute section or the five-minute section of public comment. The three-minute public comment, you have to restrict your comments to things on tonight's agenda. At the five-minute public comment, you're free to speak on any matter that the commissioners have authority over. We ask that as your name is called, you come to the podium and identify yourself with your name and address. Also, we ask that your comments are made to the board in its entirety and not one individual commissioner, that comments are respectful in nature and do not promote a candidacy or a business. Commissioners will reserve the response if they desire at Commissioner comments. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Who moves?
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Consent agenda?
Who moves?
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item three, Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up for the first public comment?
Madam Chair, there are no individuals signed up for the first public comment, period.
Very well, moving right along. Would you like to take items four, five, and six?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item four, presentations. The first item this evening is a special recognition of Ms. Veda Birding. Commissioner Eitner requests that Commissioner Bright, Chairman Eitner rather, request that Commissioner Bright present the certificate. Commissioner Bright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, we have someone in our presence tonight that I am proud and honored to give this certificate of recognition to Ms. Veda Birding by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the citizens for being a rare and cultural treasure to Onslow County. Signed, Barbara Eitner, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, June 1st, 2015. Ms. Birding is very unique to a lot of us in this audience tonight, and because she's such a treasure for Onslow County and the citizens of North Carolina and a lot of other places also, Ms. Birding, if you don't mind, I can tell your age. Well, she just said she has celebrated her birthday February 22nd, and she was 106 years old, and she's here tonight. Tom, is her son, Tom Birding, can you bring her out and let her face the audience for us here? Second. Let me present this to you from the Board of Commissioners. And also, I have here a Onslow County coin from Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And I also have a Board of Commissioners's appeal pin. You can wear that proudly. She lives in Swansboro. And, Tom, if you could hold that for your mother. And I would like to say, would you like to say a couple words for us, or could you answer a couple questions for us? Okay. Can you tell the audience how you stayed so healthy and how you stayed so young-looking all this time?
I'm just dizzy all the time. Send cards and just dizzy, reading the paper and just every day, just things I want to do every day.
Do you read the paper every day?
Oh, yes, I do. Dear Abby, for sure.
Does the Daily News get all the stories right?
Yeah, I like that. I like to read the historical page column there, too. So I can read that. You know, Dear Abby. I start on the front page and try to read the whole thing through, takes about an hour or...
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Tom, thank you for bringing your mother, and it was a pleasure and an honor to have you here and give you that certificate and hope to see you be here another 106 years. Tom, would you want to say anything?
My mom's, I think one thing that keeps her going, she has a very positive attitude. Never says anything mean about anybody. I can be griping about something and she'll say, you know, maybe they're just having a bad day, you know, and go on, especially drivers. Anyway, and Mom, a lot of people don't know, two years ago, she had colon cancer, and it was an emergency operation, and she made it through that, survived it, and here we are two years later, and she's doing fine. No after-effects, going through rehab or anything, so she's remarkable in that sense. But she does a good job, she's got a great memory, and still sews, writes letters all the time, and she does stay busy. We don't have to do anything. We're always fixing food, and she eats good. About 90 birthday cards a year, Mom has seen?
Anniversary cards, and I remember all their, in my head there.
Yeah, she wrote down here a while back, all of the addresses that she had lived at, not only towns and streets, but the numbers in the street, for 14 of them. And I've quizzed her, I said, "Mom, where were you in 1931?" She rattled it off. "Where were you in 1955?" She told me. So it was kind of remarkable that somebody can remember every place they lived, the street name and the address. We'll be back here next year.
Thank you, Ms. Veda. I'm glad you didn't say anything bad about anybody, because a lot of people like to talk about the commissioners. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, item B is presentation of the fiscal year '16 budget. And if I may, before I begin, I have, over the last 22 years, spoken to many different crowds behind many different speakers, but I have never followed such a remarkable speaker in my entire career. And I just would like to thank the commissioners for commending Ms. Birding, and it's just a pleasure to be in here with her this evening.
It was, thank you.
Madam Chair, with your permission? In North Carolina, the county manager or the city manager is required to also become the budget officer, and so no later than June 1 of each calendar year, the budget officer submits a budget to the municipality or the county that they serve. This evening is my pleasure to publicly present the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. A hard copy of the budget was delivered to each one of the Board of Commissioners in accordance with law prior to the due date as recorded by statute. Also, if I may, as I begin, I'd like to mention that hard copies of the budget are available for public inspection right now in county administration and in all Onslow County public libraries. Let's talk first of all about the Onslow County government budgetary process. We have conservative financial practices, and those conservative financial practices have continued. Without conservative financial practices, the county would never have gained the bond rating, the financial rating of AA by Standard &amp; Poor's. We've practiced zero-based budgeting, which means that instead of a baseline budget and simply adding on to the amount of money that was budgeted the prior year, each department came and presented to the budget team a budget that started with a base of zero from the different line items. So for instance, for training, the departments were asked to conduct a study on what kinds of training you would need in the following fiscal year and build that training budget from zero. How many people need to go to which class, how much does each class cost, et cetera. The budget meets all statutory requirements. It is a balanced budget. We're very fortunate here in North Carolina, much more so than in some other states of the Union. We have the Local Government Commission, we have strong financial oversight of local governments in North Carolina, and we know that in North Carolina, all of our governments have balanced budgets. There is no property tax rate increase proposed in this budget. Looking at the overview of the budget, total request from all sources was still over $211 million. Now, I would note that that includes all funds, so enterprise funds, general funds, everything, every request and every different fund or department is included there. The budget team cut over $6.6 million, and then the all-funds proposed budget was $204 million. Below that, you'll see on your screen a general fund budget of $195 million. Now, the general fund budget is that budget which is supported in part with property taxes. As we'll see a little bit later on the presentation, property taxes are not the only source of revenue, however, they are a very important revenue. So it would be incorrect or a mathematical error to compare the all-funds proposed budget from one year to the general fund budget alone in the second year. So in apples-to-apples would be general fund to general fund, or in all-funds, total budget to total budget. There are many factors that affect every budget, and this is true everywhere, both internal factors and external factors. So at this time, I'd like to go into a few of the things that are affecting the budget. First of all, mandates. Every year, as we talk about budgeting, this portion of my presentation remains, because quite frankly, nothing has changed, nor do I believe that it will change. We are not the big fish in the pond. We are a smaller fish. There's the federal government, there's the state government, and a lot of the activities that we undertake are mandates. Those can be generally classified in two ways. Hard mandates, in which you have a program mandate, you will provide this service, and a funding mandate, and you will provide this service using this much money to do so. An example of that might be social services, public assistance, social welfare programs. Soft mandates are a little different. There, there's a program mandate, you will provide a service, but there's discretionary funding. So the county Board of Commissioners has discretion in the amount of funding that's necessary. Emergency medical services, for example, we need to provide emergency medical services, but the exact amount of dollars set aside for that purpose is not fixed. Board of Elections, another example. We must conduct elections, of course, but the exact amount of money is not fixed. All in all, about 80% of the activities undertaken by county government could be considered those hard mandates or soft mandates. 18% hard mandates, 62% soft mandates. For those items that the commissioners have complete discretion over, an example might be a county museum or parks and recreation, the types of, or different services offered by the library system, quality-of-life type issues. It's not necessary, and no one tells you you have to do those things, it may be an expectation of the public, but it's not a necessary program in that you, thou shalt, do it. And it's also not a mandated funding amount either. So that's only about 20% of the overall budget that the commissioners have complete control over. Well, as we talk about the types of services provided, whether they are mandates or whether they're completely discretionary, we also have to look at county growth. This chart comes from the State Office of Budget and Management. Every year, the state helps local jurisdictions measure their potential future growth in terms of population. As you can see here from the bar chart, in 2015, we're looking at a population right now of about 194,000 persons. That is projected to rise over the next several years to 2019, where we're looking at 200,000 persons. And then in the decades to follow, very long-range projections take us out to 250,000. But of course, you know, the longer into the future you go, the less certain things are. But one thing that's been very certain, over the last couple of decades, Onslow County has grown steadily, at times faster than others, such as with the 202K plus-up of the Marine Corps. That might bring a quick jolt or influx of people, but if you take those jumps out, the trend line of population growth in Onslow County has been fairly steady. This is a really good chart. It's a good chart because it looks at the school system, but if you think about it, all those kids live somewhere with families, or they're living here in Onslow County, and the growth of the school district population also is indicative of the growth in the total population. So if you look at 2004, the school system had about 21,700 kids in it, and in 1516, we're looking at 25,900. So generally speaking, except for 201011, where there was a little dip in student population, you also have a trend line. You could draw a line from 2004 to 2016, and you see a kind of a slow, steady increase. So where would those increases be? Growth in the county does not happen in neat little packets. As people come through to the county line, there's no one greeting them saying, "Well, hello, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, we would like for you to live at 101 South Shell Road in Tops Island." "Hello, Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so, you're going to be in Swansboro." No, they're going, of course, where the individual decisions about their livelihoods, their jobs, their ability for housing will push them. And over the last few years, you'll see that a lot of growth has happened in the Richlands area, and that's probably not surprising. So let me tell you how we developed this chart. If you look at the creation of parcels, that will be one indicator of how growth happens or where growth happens. For example, grandpa had 100 acres. Grandpa has two children. Each of them get 50 acres. They have grandkids or great-grandkids, and instead of leaving that acreage as it is, they say, "Hey, we could sell 50 acres to a developer," and they'll put, you know, 175 homes on it. Well, we can actually see the number of parcels that are created. So as you have parcel increases happening in different areas of the county, you know that's an indicator of additional housing developments, residential developments, as those larger tracts are being cut up into smaller parcels. So here on this map, you'll see that the number-one growth area in Onslow County between '09 to '15 has been the Richlands area, 21.2% increase in parcel creation, followed by Swansboro at 15.2%. Earlier today, I was speaking with someone, and it just occurred to me as I was having that conversation, this has been independently verified by Walmart. You know, Walmart, and I know, depending on the area of the county you live in, that might be good news or bad news, but the fact of the matter is, Walmart, massive corporation, they do due diligence on where they're going to place stores. And they had two stores immediately planned with several smaller stores to follow, but the two Walmart supercenters were planned for the Swansboro Township and the Richlands Township. And so that tracks, you know, it's not related to county government in any way whatsoever, but it makes sense when you look at this data that we're able to pull about where things are growing and what an independent private company is finding. All of that growth and development that's around the county does increase revenues, and this chart shows you where our revenues come from. There are actually many different revenue streams that the county draws upon, but there are three largest streams of revenue that the county draws upon, and this is from the proposed fiscal year '16 budget, of course. Property taxes account for about 44.46% of our revenues. So a lot of people actually believe that property tax, that's pretty much what we run government on. It's not the majority of what we run government on. All of the other revenue streams combined make up the majority of our revenue stream. Sales taxes, very important, 18.36%, and then you have restricted intergovernmental revenue, 15.53%. Remember I said earlier that we're not the big fish in the pond. There are bigger fish, the state and the feds, and many times for those mandated services, those hard mandates, where they say, "You will spend this much money, and you will spend it in these programs," they will also give some amount of money or appropriation that's restricted. So we will make you do this program, you will spend this much money on it, and we will give you this much money of that sum to perform this program. So that's restricted for that unique and individual purpose. That's about 15.53%. So of those revenues that are coming in that we're expending, where do we spend most of the money on in the proposed '16 budget? There are three areas. Public education, the largest single chunk, you'll see 33.05% of all expenditures are for public education. Now, that not only includes K-12, but also community colleges, I'll cover a little bit later. Human services, DSS, the Health Department, et cetera, 24.47%, and public safety, 17.5%. One question that I've had through the years, Jeff, just break it down very simply. You're spending more money this coming year, aren't you? And I would say, in most years, well, yes. A lot of that is dependent on growth in the county, because as people build more houses, we're able to gain revenue on a house, and an improved property would produce more revenue than, say, an empty farm lot. But as that growth comes in, we do have additional revenue, and this year, we're spending in fiscal year '16, proposed, about $6.4 million more than in fiscal year '15. So once again, that question, well, where's it going? What's it for? So a couple of years ago, I started actually going through those line items in our budget after we finished with our budget team, and pulling together, where is a majority of that new expenditure happening at, and pulling it down to one table. So first of all, you'll see the Onslow County Board of Education, a $1.489 million increase. That's based on a funding formula, and they've had an increase in the number of kids, and they've also had an increase in the state average per pupil appropriation. So that is per funding formula. Board of Elections, an increase of $337,936. We're anticipating a presidential election, of course, in 2016, and we're also having the possibility of several other elections. It requires everything from the printing of ballots to poll workers, and so we see a large jump in those major election cycles for Board of Elections, and that is cyclical. So every so many years, you'll see that. 1% COLA is recommended, and that 1% COLA would be for most employees, $650,000. Coastal Carolina Community College, a $500,000 appropriation. Onslow County Sheriff's Office and Jail, $648,252 increase. And then you'll see another line, Department Support to Sheriff's Office, $66,500. That's a little unusual in terms of description. What that is, is the Sheriff's Office, for instance, needed computers. They also had in their budget janitorial supplies. Where we would have had, actually not janitorial supplies, because that's not a department increase, but for instance, computers, where we'd have computers and we would have increased the Sheriff's Office budget for computers, we decided centrally that we're going to be replacing, according to a laptop, a PC replacement schedule, county computers, and that all of those replacements, regardless of the department or the office or the agency, should be housed in an information technology department. So those increases are over in IT as well. Paying classification market adjustment, phases two and three, $1 million. The county has a workforce of over 1,200 employees, and we're on a cycle right now that about every four years, an individual position would be looked at versus the market, the overall market of other counties, of other jurisdictions, and whether or not we're paying a competitive wage for that particular salary. And so in fiscal year '16, $1 million is set aside to adjust paying classification where necessary for a portion of our workforce to be competitive in the market. I mentioned the computer replacement program, and also, of course, Microsoft Office licenses on the screen. We have not had a set computer replacement program, so we're looking at that, a replacement for every four years for computers. Health account increase, $250,000. This is something that we're doing to try to improve the health of our workforce. We've gone to biometric measuring. So I had to have my waist measured. I didn't do really great. I also had to have my cholesterol checked, my blood pressure, all kinds of things done. And as we're going forward as an organization with 1,200 covered lives and more than that now, we have to get a handle on the overall health of our workforce, because while it's important that our staff be healthy, that they be able to do their jobs, especially if they have a very physically demanding job, or if they're, say, in emergency services, it's also important that we be able to control our healthcare costs. Healthcare is a benefit that government traditionally offers, and if we're unable to control our benefit cost, then that creates a problem for us in future budget years. So what this amount of money is, is it would allow the county to place an additional $500 for employees that met certain biometric readings into a health savings account. We're encouraging people to leave their PPO and go into a health savings account. It's better for the county in many instances, depending on the situation. It's also very good for the employee. I have a health savings account myself. I have a health savings account myself. And so that reduces costs for the organization. This year, we're incentivizing. In future years, we'll also be looking at ways that we can continue to increase the health of the workforce, but in addition to incentives, we may also be harder on some biometric readings as well, to make sure people are taking care of themselves. Industrial lot preparation, Burton Park infrastructure. We know that there's an increased interest in Burton Park. And one thing that we've learned from our private sector colleagues is that for people to want to buy something, they have to see it. And so a portion of this money would be used to start clearing some lots in accordance with Dena regulations and standards, so that people could see the lots that are available in Burton Park, and also engineering and some other professional services to try to extend one of our roads that is here in Burton Park. We also are interested in applying for grant money with the state and with others to help us extend that road. Retiree insurance. This is not a benefit that we continue to offer any longer to new Onslow County employees, but for a period of time in the past, Onslow County offered retiree insurance, and we understand that the cost of that benefit, although the benefit has stopped for current employees, we have to honor it for those that were retiring under that system, and that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. Workers' compensation, we are self-insured in workers' compensation, and looking at our existing projections, we need to increase our workers' comp fund by five hundred thousand dollars. And finally, a scheduled transfer to capital fund of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We have a scheduled transfer annually based on long-range capital planning. This year, that would be two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. That comes out of our operational budget, and it goes into our capital financing, and that enables us to continue to make debt service payments, et cetera. So altogether, that's about six point three of the six point four million dollars. The difference in six point three oh eight and six point four are very small amounts scattered through the budget, might be a fuel expense here or a copy machine there, or something like that. Of all of those expenses, human resources is certainly a large expense. Personnel costs are one of the greatest costs of any organization. Department requests totaled fifty-six new positions in the budget. Eighteen are recommended for approval. Fourteen of those have no impact on the general fund. It may be because they have increased revenues, or it may be that they've been able to cover the cost of those different positions inside their existing budgets. Four do have impact on the general fund. As I mentioned earlier, the human resource proposal does include a one percent employee cost of living adjustment. That would be for most, but not all, county employees. No merit pay increase is currently included within the budget, and the budget does continue to address phase three of that paying classification corrections plan, as I mentioned on the prior page. Another major budget driver, once again, is public education. It's an interesting fact that forty-three point six eight cent of the current sixty-seven point five cent property tax rate funds public education, and that, once again, includes both K-12 Board of Education and the community college. We do have that current funding formula, which is based on objective data. It's actually being studied by multiple counties at this time. I was asked by the school of government in September to come up to Chapel Hill and talk a little bit about that. Statewide average per pupil appropriation increased from seventeen hundred and forty-two dollars to seventeen hundred and fifty-five dollars per pupil. So that is factored into this budget. An increase for every one of those nearly twenty-six thousand students, there's that thirteen dollar per student increase, plus an increase of total numbers of students, about three hundred and thirteen new students that would be factored in. And the county has, according to the formula, a four hundred thousand dollar increase to the school system's capital ongoing maintenance program. So once again, that totals one point four-eight-nine. Coastal Carolina Community College, I mentioned five hundred thousand earlier. That's in two different places. First of all, a hundred thousand dollars for a public safety training area, that's just to begin that. That's anticipated to be a multi-year expenditure. And then four hundred thousand dollars to relocate the cosmetology program. That's in a building on the very center of the campus. These requests from Coastal were put forward and negotiated with Dr. Lingle and his staff, Vice President Heathley, and others. Asset replacement. County has a lot of assets. Certainly, we have buildings, but we also have rolling stock, we have vehicles, and we have government vehicles, and we've got computers, as mentioned earlier. For a vehicle replacement plan, staff has spent quite a lot of effort on this this year. We have a very large fleet, and we wanted to make sure that we got the most number of vehicles possible. We're recommending that we replace twenty-three sheriff's office vehicles, two ambulances, two animal services response trucks, and six general government vehicles. In addition, for our computer replacement program, we're looking at a four-year replacement cycle for computers. So having said all of that, you know, lots of numbers, if you were interested in knowing just how well you were doing, you might go see a doctor. You might say, "Doctor, I want your independent third-party opinion. How am I?" So this evening, I'd like to give you and the public some information on how we, as a county, are doing, how we're doing financially. We were recently assessed by Standard and Poor's. I'm actually not talking about the increased financial rating that we received several months ago. As the commissioners and the public know, we are looking at a bond. When I say a bond, it's not a general obligation bond, but we're looking at an issuance of debt, installment financing for a couple of projects coming up later this year. And so Standard and Poor's, that international rating company, needed to look at Onslow County, and we received a report back from them just a couple of weeks ago as I was writing this budget message. And excerpts from that report are included in their entirety inside the budget message, and I would encourage everybody to read those. But basically, Standard and Poor's, an international financial company that looks at individuals that are seeking to borrow money, they had to rate us and look at us for this upcoming issuance, just as you would have to perhaps go to a bank if you're interested in buying a house or buying a car, they would look at you. Here, we have three different assessments. An assessment of management, they indicated that the county's management is very strong with strong financial policies and practices. They've assessed our budgetary performance. Once again, they've said that our budget performance is very strong. And our debt and contingent liability profile, are we in any way a bad risk? And they say, "No, we're also strong in that." So once again, the budget message, there's more information about what Standard and Poor's has said about Onslow County. One thing that they have been very impressed with is our ability to forecast long range and long-range financial planning. In two thousand nine, the Board of County Commissioners adopted capital reserve funding and long-range financial planning. At that time, there was just one capital reserve fund, the general government capital reserve fund, and now there are two. There's also the K-12 Public School Capital Fund, and that was implemented last year. The school system worked with the county commissioners, and the county commissioners requested, you may recall, about thirteen million dollars of school system fund balance to seed or start the capital reserve fund for public education. And that public education and general government fund, they were looked at heavily by Standard and Poor's. They say that we're doing remarkably well. And in fact, you'll see on this slide that although we've been able to do many things, and we do have debt right now of about a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, we're financially solvent, and we are nowhere near our debt limit. Our debt limit is about eight hundred and seventy-eight million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're at one eighty-seven out of eight hundred and seventy-eight. So we've been conservative in our financial practices, and we know every single building how we're going to pay that debt off over time and not overextend the county. As I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, paper copies of the budget are currently available in Onslow County Administration here in this building at two thirty-four Northwest Corridor Boulevard, and also at all branches of the Onslow County Public Library. We will also have the complete budget online tomorrow at our government website, www.onslowcountync.gov, no later than five o'clock PM. Citizen comments are welcome. All comments are provided to the Board of County Commissioners, and those comments may be emailed to the board at the email shown here, budgetcomments@onslowcountync.gov, or sent by US mail to Onslow County Administration at the address shown on the screen. The commissioners receive copies of every single comment that's provided, unedited. Staff will provide all of those directly to the board. General statutes say that no decision may be made on a budget until after a required public hearing. The recommended time for a public hearing, should the Board of Commissioners desire it, would be on Monday, June fifteenth, at the regular meeting of the board, which would be at seven o'clock PM or as soon thereafter as feasible. The location would be here in this room, the County Commissioners' Chambers, Onslow County Government Center, two thirty-four Northwest Corridor Boulevard, Jacksonville. Now, that is a statutory requirement, the public hearing. And the statute, beyond the budget presentation and it being available for public inspection and the public hearing, the statute doesn't go into a lot of the processes of local government. Historically, the Board of County Commissioners has had budget workshops, and right now, I know that next week, starting on Monday, the commissioners have set aside time, beginning Monday, for a series of budget workshops. At that time, the commissioners would receive presentations from the finance officer and many others, department heads, agency heads, about the proposed budget and what needs are there. So the commissioners take this proposed budget and now go into deliberations, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the public. All the way up until the end of June, we're still in the current fiscal year. Starting July one is the new county fiscal year, and so typically, the commissioners could take up until the end of June to make a decision on the budget. If it goes past that, there are some continuing resolutions and other things that need to happen. Onslow County's been fortunate in that we've never had to do that, to my knowledge. But right now, the budget as presented moves from management and the budget team to the county commissioners. Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my presentation of the budget. All of the copies have now been delivered in accordance with statute, and the budget is now yours to do with as you will. Staff stands ready to implement your decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And as you had stated, the Board of Commissioners have scheduled, starting next Monday, the workshops. That gives us all week to analyze what has been presented to us and roll up our sleeves and get to work on it. So thank you for that presentation, Mr. Hudson. Would you like to continue now?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item five, general items. Item A, Resolution fifteen dash ten, a resolution of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners in support of North Carolina Governor Pat McCrory's Connect NC Bond Initiative. At this time, I'll read the resolution. Resolution fifteen dash ten, a resolution of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners in support of North Carolina Governor Pat McCrory's Connect NC Bond Initiative. Whereas Governor Pat McCrory has proposed a two-point-eight-five billion-dollar bond initiative intended to connect North Carolina communities in the twenty-first century by building roads, upgrading technology, constructing and improving educational facilities, enhancing medical services, supporting our military installations, improving parks and recreation facilities, and building and improving port and rail infrastructure. And whereas these strategic investments are designed to benefit every community across this great state and will create jobs and improve the quality of life and environment for every North Carolinian, and whereas because of North Carolina's fiscal strength and strong balance sheet, no tax increase will be required to fund these bonds, and in addition, the state's triple-A bond rating will be preserved. And whereas by not addressing our serious infrastructure deficiencies now, our state will lose its ability to compete in the future, interest rates will go up, cost to taxpayers will increase, congestion will worsen, and jobs will not expand at the rate needed to sustain a healthy and vibrant North Carolina. And whereas the citizens of North Carolina must be allowed to make the important decision of investing in the opportunities provided to our future generations through the Connect NC Bond Initiative. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners support a statewide infrastructure bond initiative and encourages the General Assembly to allow North Carolina citizen to vote on this critical bond proposal to ensure North Carolina's future on the global stage. Be it further resolved that the county recognizes the changing needs of Onslow's community, may require some variation from the projects currently named within the Connect NC proposal. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners request that the structure of the bond program allow flexibility to add or alter projects based on new information and priorities from the county of Onslow. Adopted this the first day of June two thousand and fifteen. The action requested is to request consideration of the resolution.
What's the Board's pleasure on the bond resolution?
I move that we approve the bond resolution from Governor Pat McCrory.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Continue, Mr. Hudson.
I'd be the childcare subsidy. At this time, I'll call Ms. Heidi Bauer. Social Services Director to present this item. Ms. Bauer.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Social Services is responsible for providing the childcare subsidy to the citizens of Onslow County. The subsidy program is funded through a combination of state and federal money, and it subsidizes quality childcare for working-class families. In two thousand and fourteen, the department contracted that service with the Onslow County Partnership for Children, so that families would be able to get access in one stop versus having to go to different places. That has worked out very well for the families of Onslow County, and both the Partnership for Children and the agency would like to continue with that contract. The state grant cycle runs from June first, two thousand and fifteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. The contract for the partnership is for an amount no greater than ten million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. That is the amount that we will be given by the state and federal. There are no county dollars in that. I would respectfully request that the Board approve and authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Remove. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Heidi.
Item C, grant funding for recycling program. Ms. Lisa Ryder, Assistant Director of Onslow County Solid Waste, will present this item. Ms. Ryder.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to represent the Solid Waste Department to present this item. This agenda item is in regard to the grant funding acceptance letters that we received from the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources to expand our recycling program infrastructure at our county convenience center sites, and more specifically, to fund the cooking oil, motor oil, and antifreeze recycling program. Tonight, we ask you to respectfully consider acceptance of the grant contract approving the expansion of the cooking oil, motor oil, and antifreeze recycling program at our area convenience center sites, making these items easier to recycle for our citizens. The state grant contract funds two thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cent of the cost, and our local matching forms from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund totals seven hundred and six dollars and sixty cent.
What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? I would like to ask, what is it you do with the cooking oil, motor oil, antifreeze?
They're all recycled in different ways. The cooking oil is actually going to a biofuel company, and it's turned into biofuels. It's used in the same kind of way that it runs things that diesel engines run off of. The motor oil is also recycled, and it's turned back into another usable type of motor oil, and the antifreeze is also recycled as well in that way.
That sounds great.
We make a little bit of revenue, too, from the recycling of those items.
That's why y'all do such a good job out there. What's the Board's pleasure? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item D, Home and Community Care Block Grant. Ms. Sherri Slater, Assistant County Manager for Consolidated Human Services, will present this item. Ms. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. The Home and Community Care Block Grant, as you know, is the grant that Onslow County Senior Services receives each year. It's a combination of state and federal dollars, older Americans Act, and provides the services that we're able to provide for our seniors for in-home services, transportation, and our home-delivered and congregate meal program. This amendment before you is simply some additional dollars that the state has allocated for the current fiscal year, and we're required to submit an amended budget for those additional grant dollars. There is a ten percent county match required for this grant. However, that can be met through existing senior services operational funds, so there will be no additional dollars requested for this change.
Agreed.
Approve the contract.
I have a motion to approve the contract. Do I have a second?
Second. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Our match on that is only eighty-eight dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have.
This is just a seven hundred and ninety-five dollar increase. This is just a $795 increase. Um, the total budget is larger in the, it's a 10% match of the total budget, but for the increase, it only required an $88 match.
And Madam Chair, I also had a question in reference to that, and I wanted to know what was the initial grant allocation? Cause that was just very interesting to me, and we only had that $88 match, which is nice.
The current, I'm sorry, ma'am, the current total grant is $669,795.
Okay.
Um, which is a $795 increase.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further? All in favors, uh, did we do my?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Items E and F are also Ms. Slater, so if you'd just stay at the podium, Ms. Slater. E is Home Health and Hospice Occupational Therapy Contract, and following that, F, Home Health and Hospice Physical Therapy Contract. Ms. Slater, if you'd take those items.
Thank you. Um, as you know, with our Home Health and Hospice program, we are required, under our conditions of participation, which is the Medicare requirement, that we provide, um, occupational therapy to the patients that we serve in Home Health and Hospice. This service is part of the natural episode for the patient, and it is reimbursed through Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance, so there's revenue attached to this contract.
Approve the contract.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
And I'll continue on if it's all right with you, Madam Chair.
By all means.
The physical therapy contract for Home Health and Hospice, um, follows the same line as the occupational therapy. It is a required therapy under our Medicare conditions of participation. Again, it is part of the episode, and it is billed that way, so the reimbursement comes through the Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance for this service as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have one question.
Let me get a motion on the floor first. Do I have a motion?
Consider the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, we'll have discussion.
And that is, are these local companies?
These are actually local companies.
Fantastic.
Um, we do periodically put this service out for bid, um, but in the five years that the program has been at senior services, it has been, or six years now, it has, um, always been a local company that's come in with the best bid.
That is fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Sherry, also too, I believe we've used these companies, uh, in the past and been very satisfied with their service, but have we ever gone back and analyzed whether it would be better to employ that person, uh, on, as a member of Home Health or?
Yes, ma'am, we look at that periodically. Um, we've looked at it several times in the last couple of years. One of the issues is that the need for physical therapy, um, is very affluent, and so, um, when we have patients with higher acuity or higher needs, then the, the visits will go up. Um, when we have patients that have other needs that aren't particular to, uh, or specific to physical and occupational therapy, then those needs might go down. If we employ those staff full-time, then their schedule is very, um, regimented to our schedules, and with a company doing it, they're able to schedule those visits around, more around the patient's needs. If they need visits, you know, on the weekend, if they don't want people there before 8:00 AM, um, that sort of thing, and it, it helps to, uh, for us to provide a better level of service to those patients. Additionally, we're able to, um, our physical therapist, for instance, is able to employ physical therapy assistants that can work under his direction as well, um, and it just gives more flexibility and brings the cost down for the program.
Okay, that sounds good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Item G, Fire District Boundary Changes. I ask Mr. Norman Bryson, Director of Onslow County Emergency Services, to come forward to ask, uh, rather, to present this item, and, uh, Mr. Bryson, if you would, in your presentation, uh, please do spend a little bit of extra time on the five-mile to six-mile radius around a fire station and how that affects homeowners' insurance rates, please.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, tonight, we have several proposed changes to the fire district boundaries. The reasons that we've done these changes is to actually take housing in communities and to bring them into lower ratings or insurance ratings, uh, that is actually adjusted and engaged by the North Carolina Department of Insurance. The reason that we do this is, as you change your ratings, whatever that rating may be, that rating for every level that you go down, and I'll use an example of a six to a seven, could bring anywhere from a 10% to 15% reduction in what you pay in homeowner's insurance premiums. Now, as these districts are gauged, there are several boundary lines that they look at. One of these boundary lines is what they first call a five-road mile area. In that five road miles from wherever the location of that station is, a homeowner or a business is able to lower their homeowner insurance ratings to the, well, for homeowners, it's leased to a Class 6. For businesses, it can go all the way to a Class 1. And whatever the district rating comes, they can be lowered all the way down through those levels. Now, if you have a boundary line that is called an extended district, which goes from five road miles out to six road miles, that area can be lowered, no lower than a Class 9E, which, like I said earlier, that's at least a 10% to 15% reduction and which is much better than a 10. If you have a Class 10, it is much like not having a fire district or a fire department anywhere near your home. Now, because of the Department of Insurance rules, we're not able to give anyone any additional ratings beyond the six-mile district. So, you have two areas. You have from zero to five miles, which can go as low as the rating can go, and then you have from five to six miles, which can only go to a 9E, which the E stands for extended district. For the proposed changes that we're bringing forth tonight, uh, one of the first changes is an area that is Alf, uh, out in the Sterling Farms community. Uh, we're actually making a proposed change moving from the Hubert Fire District over to Piney Green. The reason we're making this proposed change, if we do not make changes to parts of those roadways, there will be area in the back that will become a Class 10 rating. So, by actually making a change, uh, to portions of these parcels, we will have go, some that will go from a Class 10 to a 9E. This will affect about 154 dwellings, uh, which will allow them to actually be able to share this. If we did not make the change, like I said, there's some areas where we couldn't cross boundary lines, and then, like I said, we would have Class 10 areas. Second proposal is off in the Rose Town District, which is only going to affect two dwellings, but if we did not make these changes, those two dwellings in itself would be a Class 10. Rose Town Fire Department is a ISO Class 7, so these homes will actually see a rating lower from a Class 10 down to a Class 7. The next change is Alf of Highway 258, uh, and this is a change between Richlands Fire Department and Rose Town. As you see, this is called the Northwest Onslow Fire District. Uh, by ISO and Department of Insurance ruling, you cannot have fire districts named the same thing. So, you have the Town of Richlands District, and then everything that's outside of the Town of Richlands is called the Northwest Onslow Fire District. Now, there's a section in there that we're actually recommending a change, which will affect 57 homes. This originally was in the Rose Town District, uh, which they were a Class 7, however, Richlands is a Class 5. Uh, there's not going to be much difference in response times for these agencies going uh, back and forth between this district, and like I said, we're, we're making this recommendation to go from a Class 7 to a Class 5, which there again, as homeowners, they can only get as low as to a Class 6, but this will be an improvement for those 54 homes. The next change is actually off, uh, in the Halls Run community. This is actually taking a subdivision and changing it from the Verona Fire District to the Halls Run Fire District. The main reason of this change is Halls Run is closer. In this last year, Halls Run Fire Department was actually able to lower their ISO rating from a 9S down to a Class 5. Because of that change, and them being closer to this area, it is better to go ahead and move this community, which affects 30 dwellings, into their new area. This is moving from Verona Fire Department, which is a Class 6 currently at this time. That's all of the recommended changes that we have on these. As you can see, these changes are anywhere because of bringing fire departments closer or reducing their insurance ratings. Uh, all of these, we have worked with the volunteer fire departments, all the departments that we've changed with, they have all agreed to these changes, and we've also carried this before the Fire Rescue Commission, and they have approved all of these changes. I'd be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve all the proposed fire district changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Norm, I would, uh, on behalf of the Board, like to, um, thank the, um, Fire Commission and our volunteer fire departments. It's always great when we can save our citizens some, um, money on their insurances, so, thank you. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item H, Interlocal Agreement for EMS First Responder Program with Swansboro Department of Public Safety Division of Fire Service. Chief Beth, Beth Heims, EMS Division, Onslow County Emergency Services, will be presenting this item. Chief Heims.
Good evening. Uh, the Town of Swansboro has requested an interlocal agreement to allow the Swansboro Fire Department to provide EMS first response within the town limits and its ETJ at a basic level. Um, in accordance with the Onslow Camp Lejeune EMS System Plan, Policies, and Protocols, uh, the Onslow County Peer Review has reviewed the request, um, and recommends favorable, favorable consideration by the, by the Board of Commissioners. So, we do respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve, uh, the interlocal agreement with the Town of Swansboro.
Thank you. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the interlochen agreement.
And second?
Second.
Discussion? Uh, Beth, you had stated this will be for the basic, uh, ambulance service. Advanced life support will still be provided by the county?
Yes, ma'am. They will be a first responder only, they will not re- be responding any ambulances. Initially, they will be responding to cardiac arrest, respiratory distress, chest pain, those more critical, high-acuity, um, calls, and then as the service progresses, we expect that they, they may expand, but that will be initially those initial life safety issues.
And if, if we expanded that, that would come back before us?
It would have to come, it would come before the Peer Review Committee, um, in order to do that. This allows them to, to provide the BLS first response in its entirety. They have chosen with their initial implementation to start with the, the high-acuity, um, calls where someone really needs to be there within a few minutes. Initially, it's only going to be during the daytime hours, uh, when they have their paid staff on service, and I, and their anticipation is as they expand that they will go to a 24-hour service, but right now, it's, 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 I believe, from 7:00 to 7:00, uh, daytime only, um, and the initial is, again, for the more high-acuity calls.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item I, Set Public Hearing for Proposed 2015-2016 Budget. The specific action requested is to respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners set the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 1516 Onslow County Budget on Monday, June 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM or as soon as possible after the start of the meeting in Commissioners Chambers, Onslow County Government Center, 234 Northwest Corridor Boulevard, Jacksonville.
Move to approve-
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the proposed budget hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Item 6, Appointments. A, Library Board of Trustees. There are 10 members of the Library Board of Trustees who are each appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners for three-year staggered terms. There's at least one board member representing all of the townships, as well as active-duty military, retired persons, and minorities. Ms. Kathleen Dillingham, Jacksonville Representative, Ms. Fay Waters, Retired Representative, and Ms. Sandra Wood, at-large Representative, terms will expire on June 30, 2015. All have expressed a desire to continue serving in their respective categories and have provided citizen participation applications. The specific action requested is to consider reapportment of Ms. Kathleen Dillingham, Jacksonville Representative, Ms. Fay Waters, Retired Representative, and Ms. Sandra Wood, at-large Representative, for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2018.
Remove.
Ms. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Item B, Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. A 28-member Board of Directors governs the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board in partnership with local elected officials. It is the designated administrative fiscal agent for the federal and state workforce development funds appropriated by the North Carolina Department of Commerce to operate employment and training services in a nine-county local area. Members of the ECWDB are appointed by elected officials of their respective counties in accordance with criteria established by the governor. ECWDB membership includes representatives from business and industry, education agencies, economic development agencies, vocational rehabilitation, and labor organizations. Membership is drawn from individuals who have optimum policymaking authority from their organization. Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act will go into effect on July 1, 2015. With the implementation of that act, chief elected officials must appoint members to the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, Inc., Board of Directors. Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board has requested the appointment of Mr. Ralph Leeds, who are representing Public Employment Service, Mr. Rick Stout, Education Sector, and Ms. Shannon Vitak, representing the North Carolina Division of Vocational Rehabilitation Services. Additionally, Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board has requested a waiver of reven- residency for Ms. Shannon Vitak. Ms. Vitak works in Onslow County but resides in Carteret County. Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board has expressed the challenges of finding the most qualified applicant for this mandated category. These applications are on file, have been certified by the Clerk's Office. The specific action requested is to appoint Mr. Ralph Leeds, Mr. Rick Stout, and Ms. Shannon Vitak in their respective categories for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2017, and consider a waiver of residency for Ms. Shannon Vitak.
Remove.
I have a second.
I'd like to add that we need to make sure that we consider the waiver for-
It was already in the motion, sir.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
C, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with juvenile crime prevention councils in each county to galvanize community leaders locally and statewide to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. JCPC board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners and meet monthly in each county. Each JCPC has the responsibility to review the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk of delinquency, or who have been adjudicated undisciplined or delinquent, prioritize community factors, determine the services needed to address the problem areas, develop a request for proposal for services in need, increase public awareness of the causes of delinquency, and strategies to reduce the problem, and develop strategies to intervene, respond to, and treat the needs of juveniles at risk of delinquency. The following individuals are currently serving on JCPC and have terms that will expire June 30, 2015. These individuals have expressed an interest in reapportment and provide citizen participation applications. Ms. Kelly Glenn Knapp, substance abuse professional with a term expiring June 30, 2017. Mr. William L. Ross, Board of Commissioner appointee with a term expiring June 30, 2017. The action requested is to consider reapportment of Ms. Kelly Glenn Knapp and Mr. William L. Ross in their respective categories for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2017.
Remove.
And second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
D, Nursing Home, or rather, Nursing Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. A major responsibility of advisory committees is to monitor nursing home care and resolve grievances of nursing home residents and their families involving quality of care issues. An equally important role of these communities is to serve as a catalyst for increased community interaction with nursing homes and to promote better community education and awareness of issues affecting residents. Ms. Yvonne A. Robinson has expressed an interest in appointment and has submitted a citizen participation application, which is on file and has been certified by the Clerk. The action requested is to respectfully consider the appointment of Ms. Yvonne Robert- Robertson, excuse me, Robbinson, for a remaining three-year term expiring on August 14, 2017.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
E, Alcohol Beverage Control Board. The Onslow County ABC Board is comprised of five board members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. They are appointed to serve on the ABC Board for terms of three years and can serve for three consecutive terms. The Onslow County ABC Board employs a full-time system administrator who oversees the daily operations of ABC System in Onslow County. The Onslow County ABC Board provides oversight related to the operation of the six ABC stores in Onslow County. in Onslow County. Mr. Matt C. Raymond Jr.'s term will expire on June 30, 2015. Mr. Raymond has expressed an interest in continuing to serve, has provided a citizen participation application. No other individuals have expressed an interest. The specific action is to consider reappointment of Mr. Matt C. Raymond Jr. for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2018.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Item F, Aging Planning Board. The Aging Planning Board shall consist of 18 members and shall be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners for staggered three-year terms. The purpose of the Board shall be to promote and improve the well-being of senior citizens in Onslow County, to make recommendations, advise, and consult with the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager on funding and development of facilities, services, and programs to enhance the quality of life for older adults, and to coordinate and cooperate with other organizations and human service agencies to enrich the lives of the county's senior citizens. Mr. Charles Gibbs has expressed an interest in serving on this Board in seat number two and has provided a citizen participation application. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancy was advertised, and the application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. The specific action requested is to respectfully consider appointment of Mr. Charles Gibbs in seat two for a remaining three-year term expiring September 1, 2016.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
That is the last item, and item number seven, Madam Chair. Excuse me, item number six.
Thank you. No items were pulled from the consent agenda at this time. Do we have anyone signed up for the five-minute segment of public comment?
Madam Chair, there is no one signed up for the second public comment period.
Very well. Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to say at manager's comments?
Madam Chair, only two things. First of all, I would like to thank the members of the budget team, as well as all the departments and agencies that worked on their budgets individually, and all the people that worked together since December of 2014 until now to pull together a proposed budget for the County Commissioners to consider. There are many people involved, and I would be remiss if I named everyone, but just know that you all have my appreciation. Thank you for the hard work that you've put in. Madam Chair, the second item that I would like to cover is something that came to us just a little earlier this evening, just prior to the beginning of this meeting. With your permission, we've received a letter from Congressman Jones.
Absolutely.
The County Commissioners have been very concerned over the state of New River, and specifically, the Commissioners have engaged public funds and public effort annually to try to keep the New River inlet open. And that's not only for recreational boating, but it's also for the other activities that use the Onslow County New River inlet. And that includes the United States military. In response to an inquiry made by Onslow County Government earlier this year, we received a letter from the Marine Corps Installations East, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, and that letter did verify that the Marine Corps does utilize as a strategic asset the New River inlet. That letter was forwarded to Congressman Jones' office on April 15, 2015, and today, we've received a letter from Congressman Jones. It's actually a copy of a letter that was sent to a number of individuals, including the Assistant Secretary of Army, Department of Defense, the Commander, Army Corps of Engineers, South Atlantic Region, the Commander, Army Corps of Engineers, Wilmington District, the Chief of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers, and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget in Washington, D.C. In that letter, Congressman Jones goes strongly on record supporting the efforts of the Board of County Commissioners and the Marine Corps in keeping the inlet of New River, which is a shallow draft inlet, open. And in his letter, he specifically asked that in the President's budget in this coming year and years to follow, that they appropriate funding to keep the inlet open and dredged to the depth necessary for the Marine Corps' training mission. I'd like to quote one paragraph out of that letter, or rather, a couple of sentences. Congressman Jones quoting Marine Corps Installations East states, "It is vital that the New River inlet remain passable to support said missions. To accommodate second MEF's operational needs through the inlet, the channel should be dredged to a depth not less than 10 feet and not less than 70 feet in width." And then, later on the letter, Congressman Jones writes, "It is bad enough that limited federal funding for dredging is negatively affecting commerce on our nation's waterways and the jobs associated with it. It is another thing entirely when it may impact the readiness of our armed forces." And Congressman Jones is seeking the federal government's assistance in maintaining our shallow draft inlet, not only, of course, for recreational or commercial boating, but also for our military readiness. All of this is transpiring because this Board of County Commissioners has taken a firm stance on dredging and the need to maintain that valuable natural asset. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with the audience. Mr. Bright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that we had Ms. Veda Birding tonight. All of you were here and seeing that. She's classified as a centenarian, and I'm sure there's a few more in Onslow County that may, we may know about or we may not know about. But I'm sure somebody that's been here in this county or been on this earth that long needs recognition, and I thank her family for bringing her, and she had her friends also. Other than that, I thank everybody for coming tonight. It's a good crowd. I'd like to see this place filled up every Monday night where we have a meeting. It's good to have the citizens input. Thank you. Good night. Have a safe trip home.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And I've sat here writing a few notes because I did not want to be remiss in some of the things I wanted to share with the audience tonight. And that is that I'm certainly looking forward to Onslow County receiving another distinguished budget presentation award for the hard work that we've done, for the staff, and what you've done, Jeff, and your leadership there, and all the department heads that have put together tirelessly the effort and energy behind producing the numbers and scaling through what you've provided to us in that, these next couple of weeks, that we will come back with a decision and how the budget looks. So I want to thank each of the staff members for the time and energy that's spent, because I know it's a lot. Aside from your regular daily operations, the duties that still have to be maintained. And I'm also truly glad to know that within this budget cycle, the local property taxes have not been raised for the citizens of Onslow County. Additionally, I'm ecstatic to know that within the last six months, the county's bond rating has been upgraded to a double A, and not only did we maintain, however, exceeded our former rating. And last but not least, Jeff and I had the opportunity and the privilege of attending for my first time the School of Government. And as he stated, as I sat there, I was very proud to be an Onslow County Commissioner, hearing the words in reference to the educational formula funding that we use here in Onslow County. And sometimes, you know, citizens don't realize, when you're compared to other counties and how well you operate, it's a proud feeling to sit amongst your peers throughout the different communities and hear that we stand out as much as we do. And so, I'm proud to serve the citizens and work with these commissioners and work with the staff here at Onslow County. It's really a privilege and an honor, and I thank you all, and good night. Madam Chair, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Jarman?
Good night.
Good night. Vice Chair?
I think the air said it all. I mean, all I wanted to do is say thank you to the staff and all the department heads who worked hard. I got my budget booked the other day, and I started looking through it, and a lot of hard work went into that, Jeff, and I want to thank you and the staff, and thank everybody for being here, and good night.
Certainly, I too want to thank our staff, our employees. It's not an easy thing to go through this, and they don't do it in a vacuum. They ask for guidance all year long, and so now, it'll be our opportunity to look at it. And I'm really hopeful that it'll be really quick, and I believe it will be, because I think you've done an outstanding job. Jeff, I believe there was one other recognition that Onslow County had received, and I hope I'm not letting a secret out, but didn't our solid waste get some kind of recognition?
Yes, ma'am. We were trying not to let Scott Boss' head get too big. He's hard to bear as it is, Madam Chair.
Taking his head.
I know. Well, we'll whip him in shape. Tell the audience what we got.
Well, actually, Mr. Cotton, do you have some specifics on that? We just received an email this evening involving sustainability and ICMA.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Of course, the email just dropped out. We received a phone call from ICMA this afternoon.
Hold it, David. Is, are you on a mic?
I'm not on a mic, and my email is, here we go. All right. We received a phone call from ICMA, which is the International City County Managers Association. We submitted an application for their, let's see, where is it, Community Sustainability Award consideration. And through our solid waste department, we submitted a multi-sector collaboration for alternative revenue streams, development, and long-term waste disposal capacity. Basically, boil that down, what that means is, we are very innovative through the leadership of Mr. Boss and his staff, through putting solar panels on, not abandoned, closed landfills. We took our landfill gas to energy through our recycling efforts. All of those things combined, and the way we actually dispose of our garbage, when you take all of those together, we were the award recipient for 2015 for all jurisdictions with a population of 50,000 or greater internationally. So.
Internationally?
Yes, ma'am.
Internationally, people, that's huge. That's really huge. And Scott, you've got a reason for your head to get big, so go for it. Thank you, David. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, I mean, it's one thing, like Millian said, when you're recognized among your counties, and then if you're recognized in the state and federal, but when we get global recognition, I mean, I think that's something that should be headlines for little Onslow County to get such recognition. On that, I have no further. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.